Pledge allegiance to the Bible of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Larissa Bennett said she might come late, so we -- I don't know how late. She said she was stuck in traffic, so we're just gonna start. Motion to accept the agenda?
Mayor, you have a couple of addendums. It was in everyone's packet. Addendum number one, which would be number twenty-three on your agenda, resolution setting a date and time for the villagers' annual litter flock, 2014. Addendum number two, which would be number twenty-four, resolution authorizing the rise of Southern County Walk on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, 2014, from nine a.m. to twelve p.m., and waiving all applicable fees. Addendum number three, excuse me, which would be number twenty-five, resolution authorizing the Monastella Little League procession on Saturday, May third, 2014, from eight-thirty to nine-thirty, and waiving all applicable fees. And there would be number four, addendum, which would be number twenty-six, resolution setting a public hearing date to rescind and repeal local law number ten of 2011, Title Police Commission. Those are your addendums.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agenda? Second.
I second with some amendment. Can you please read the minutes of the April seventh completely, apart of the other April eleventh, fourteen, and April first? Because the two new members really was only here the April seventh meeting. So that way they can vote for one meeting that was present, no? Because it's all together, so how can they vote for the meeting that they was never, not even elected?
I'm not quite sure I follow you. Why don't you wait till you get to that agenda item? Is that it?
Well, the only, if you say it again.
The approval of the meeting minutes, I think they're grouped as four. And whether they need to be moved is separate, because we weren't actually board members and can't vote on minutes.
Well, that's not totally so. I believe that if you've -- board minutes, if you've reviewed them, and if you're the backup, and if you're satisfied, then you could vote on it. I'm not saying one way or the other.
I have a problem with that, because on the fourteen, the Supreme Court judge ordered, and that's the minutes of that day. So that was the lawsuit. So that's the reason I said it should be completed, you know. There was no meeting, really, two members.
So what do you want to do?
Yes, I think so you should read the minutes of the seven and call it both, and then the rest is together.
You want to change to?
Yes, only the minutes of the seven, call it both.
So you want me to read seven?
Yeah, April seventh.
Can I get a roll call for the accepting the agenda?
Okay, Jill, roll call?
Yes.
Doug? Carmen?
Yes.
Okay. So now what do you want to do now?
Yes, just read the, call it both for April seventh, and the other meeting of the eleventh, fourteen, and April first, it should be called both.
We are on office.
Okay.
Yes.
What you want to do is separate?
Yeah, yes, okay.
You have a motion?
There was no.
No, instead of being one item, she wants to separate it into.
Yes, one minute.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mayor, you have, you have number five and six, which are public hearings, so you have to either.
Oh, okay, I'll vote a five then. Okay, five. Public hearing to allow assisted living in the B-one general business zoning district, can I have a motion? For public hearing to allow assisted living?
It's just a public hearing. To set up a public hearing, when? And then may say?
No, this is the public hearing.
This would be the public.
This is one.
I'll make a motion with a discussion.
All right, second? All right, a second.
Second.
Okay, Doug?
I don't think we have any information on this.
You know, I got a map here that says.
Anybody here from?
Yeah, you want to come up for a minute and just explain it to the board?
Because we don't have any information to review, and I haven't seen anything yet.
This is what I have it, that what if he wants to.
Explain it to you a little bit, and if that's adequate, good, if not, we'll get to more.
Okay.
My name's Bob Tessier. Met me, I'm a professional planner. I have worked in New York State and New Jersey for a number of years, and I'm a state in New Jersey as a community planner. I'm working on this project on five-twenty-nine Broadway, which is in your B-one zone now. In your B-one zone and your B-two zone, you allow hospitals, nursing homes, and hotels. You only recently, last year, allowed assisted living in just your B-two zone, not in the B-one zone. And I think it's that your assisted living is a relatively new definition. It has to do with the evolution they have on senior care. It used to be just at home, and then a nursing home, and now they've actually come up with these graduated levels of care. And this is reflected in the state licensing. So now they have assisted living as a separate license, there's a state definition for what assisted living is. And that's in Article forty-six B, Title One. They have a definition of assisted living, and they have a special license there for that. And it's less than nursing home, the people are more, are able to, they need some care, but they don't need, you know, the level of care that a nursing home has. So many ordinances now allow assisted living throughout New York and surrounding states, because it's a new, kind of the state of the art. Your ordinance, as I understand it, as I read it, allows hospitals, nursing homes, and hotels. But at the time you wrote that ordinance, there was, that category of assisted living didn't exist. So I know you're eventually gonna do some update on the overall zoning code. But until that time, assisted living is, I think, meets the intent of your original ordinance. Because if you put in their nursing home, hospital, hotel, assisted living is that same, same kind of intent. You know, that kind of has to do with this continuing care. So someone's able to take care of themselves completely, they're not ready to go to a nursing home, but they need someone to provide meals and do items like that for them.
This should require a zoning change, correct?
So your zone, yes, there's two, there's two. Yeah, there's two paths. You've already done a zoning change last year to allow assisted living.
Yeah, did you see that?
Right. You've already done zone change last year to allow assisted living in the B-two zone. Unfortunately, the one property that my client is pursuing assisted living on is five-twenty-nine Broadway. That's the motel property. They want to do assisted living there, apply for the license for assisted living. And at the present time, your, your B-two zone stops right at the border of that property. So that those lots. So that those lots are not included in where you allow assisted living. Although you allow motels, hotels, nursing homes, hospitals, you didn't, when you made that change, you didn't allow assisted living in that B-one zone. I don't know if there was a reason for that at the time, but you just changed one zone and not the other. So there's only two paths that you have zone-wise. You can either adjust the zoning line, adding these three lots, twelve-nine, twelve-ten point one, twelve-eleven point two, to the B-two zone. In which case, by adjusting that lot line around the motel, you'll allow the assisted living there. So that's a, you know, that's a pretty easy lift. Or you could add the assisted living to the overall zone, which would then allow it throughout, throughout B-one. So either way, works for the project that we're working on, trying to get that, that nursing home licensed as an assisted living facility. And we have to have the zoning in place as a permitted use in order to do that. I guess the intent last year was to add it to B-one, I mean B-two, which you did. But they didn't realize the line that wouldn't, that wouldn't help the motel area.
Can I say something? Actually, the assisted living, the concept. You talk about that, was, did not exist fifty-six years ago, fifty or sixty years ago, when they had the zoning at that time, zoning at the village code. The whole retirement concept, wellness, today is more modern age. Before, they only have a wellness center, then you go to nursing home, then you go to hospital. Today, in the modern age, it's more sophisticated, it between the wellness center and the nursing home. Their so-called assisted living, there also are hospice.
That's the end.
That's the end of that. It's a continuous care retirement community today.
So everyone's not fit into one box, it's depending on how independent they are. So the assisted living provides services.
Thank you.
As defined in the, in the state license. You know, it means an entity that provides housing, but they also provide onsite, onsite monitoring, personal care services in a home-like setting to five or more adult residents unrelated to the assisted living provider. And they also have to provide daily food service, twenty-four hour onsite monitoring, case management services, and the development of individual service plans for each resident. It's not nursing homes, because they're independent, they're mobile, but they've provided, but the state has this licensing requirement that has a definition that requires them to provide some services, like the monitoring, like, like meals on the site. And the idea is to provide each resident with, as it says in the state statute, considering respectful care and promote the resident's dignity, autonomy, independence, and privacy in a least restrictive and most home-like setting commensurate with the resident's preferences. So it's a more home-like setting than a nursing home.
It still has to go in front of the zoning board though, correct?
No, there's the thing, a zoning change.
The zone change is.
Yeah, change.
By the governing body.
So are you, are you requesting it as a permitted use, as a right, or as a special use permit, or?
As a right.
As a principal permitted use?
As a permitted, as a permitted use in the B-one zone. Or in, you know, as a permitted use in the B-one zone. And I think your intent in the B-one zone is to allow those types of things, because you're allowing nursing homes, and you're allowing hospitals. But at the time it was written, there wasn't this whole, you know, continuing care, there weren't even licenses for assisted living. So I think it meets the intent, so that, ideally, that would be the case. If there's some concern about doing it in the whole zone, then you could adjust the lot line on those, on those three lots, either, either path.
Well, we haven't gotten any paperwork on, on the zoning request change or the local law, right?
The chairman of the zoning board's here.
May I?
Oh.
Yeah.
That property requires a change of use variance, which has to go to forty-seven Board of Appeals for an application for public hearing. And has to meet the criteria of, of all the criteria of a use variance to be considered.
Right, as, as, as the zoning exists now.
As it exists now.
Right, so if, if the zone line was, was changed, or the zone was changed to allow this assisted living as a permitted use, then it wouldn't require that, as I understand, that it would go to the planning board for approval. And it wouldn't require a use variance, right? So as it is now, it would require a re-use variance, which is a much higher legal, you know, threshold to meet, because you haven't set as a policy that you allow assisted living. And that's why they go through the procedure of going to the zoning board and having a whole nother set of proofs. Because if you allow it as a permitted use, it's your policy, say, yes, we'd like assisted living in that zone.
When are you looking to build, starting? When would you start?
Well, we have two phases. The first phase, which is four-seventy-two, four-seventy-six Broadway, is right now is an existing furniture store. Well, it's kind of ironic. If you remember, a couple of years ago, the county gave a grant to another place to build another furniture store. Now we have two furniture stores. The other furniture store knocked down this furniture store. So they have no business. Then now we're looking for the best use for the property, four-seventy-two Broadway. We find that the best use is assisted living.
And that's permitted in that zone.
Also, during the interim, in the interim, we have a top-notch national company who specializes in healthcare feasibility. There are demands, much more than, because it's a growing market. There are demands is so big, that one place will not meet the demand. We need two places to meet that demand, a fraction of, of the demand.
Wait, attorney wanted to say something. Okay, I have two, two questions with this. Number one is, I haven't seen, and I don't know if there exists, the specific language that they, somebody is requesting to amend the zoning code. And without that, I mean, this is a conclusion of the statement, we need to see the specific language. Number two, normally, has this gone in front of the planning board, this request? Because normally, when there's.
On the zoning board.
Does anybody know?
He made initial application to the zoning board, but never pursued it.
Well, my question is, has this request to amend the zoning law gone before the planning board? Normally, when there is a request to amend the change or something regarding zoning that has to do with the planning board, it would be referred to the planning board, for the planning board to make a recommendation to this board, because this board is the board that acts on it. So if that hasn't occurred, this may be premature. And I specifically, and as I, you know, the board is saying, we haven't seen the language. My recommendation is to get the specific language that is being requested, that the zoning law wants to be amended, that that should be referred to the planning board, for the planning board to make a recommendation to this board, because this board is the one that does act. I would adjourn, recess the public hearing or adjourn it, whatever, until that occurs. I think it's premature.
Is this a village board matter, or a planning board matter, or a zoning board matter?
This is a matter to be determined by this board. But this board, normally, when municipal boards, when it has to do with zoning, they refer all of those issues first to the planning board for a recommendation, because the planning board has some specific knowledge of what the situation is and what is being requested. And then they will make a recommendation, because this board doesn't sit as a planning board and doesn't have the intricacies concerning it. So that's the normal method. I'm not saying it's gonna be one way or the other, but normally, it should go to the planning board, and the planning board should then make a recommendation.
My question is really, does the village board has the right, or they?
Should go to the planning board first.
Or the capacity to say, yes, we want?
Not until they get a recommendation from the planning board.
Is that a requirement?
Yes, as far as I know, and other municipalities, I am not an expert yet.
Well, is that, is that in the zoning book, in the village code book?
It's up to this board to decide what they want to do, whether it's a requirement or not.
Exactly.
And as the attorney, I'm strongly recommending that this go before the planning board for their recommendation to this board.
Is there your personal recommendation or a legal issue in the zoning book?
I don't have to answer your question.
Is it a procedure?
What does the board want to do? I'll make a motion to adjourn this public hearing until the planning board has had a chance to review.
And then refer it to the planning board?
Yeah, and then they'll come back up.
You'll put together the language.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And Carmen?
Yes.
All right, so we can go to five is, six is different, right? So we can go to six. Public hearing to allow an easement to the sidewalk at four-seventy-six Broadway, SBL one-eleven, point five, point twenty-three, and twenty-four. Have a motion?
A little bit of motion.
Second? You second, Carmen?
Yeah.
This is a.
It's the same thing.
This is the same thing, I don't think.
Oh, is it the same thing?
Well, with regard to not having enough information.
No, it's not the same, it's not the same.
No.
But I haven't seen the easement. Somebody, today I don't know if it was you, or somebody sent me something, which was a, sorry?
Yeah, I imagine what we had.
We don't have a completed easement, so that we know what we're talking about. What was sent to me was an incomplete document that had some, was not completed, and it had some writings on it. And I tell you, you know, I looked at it quickly, so I think this is premature also, I don't, we don't know what you're talking about, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this as well.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug? Carmen?
Yes.
You know, I found, you know, you said something, but I, I do like what you said, though. Some, like you're saying, premature, not getting information, the last-minute information that comes to you. Not, not trying to go back to the last board meeting, but the agenda that I had gotten last village board meeting. It was just something that's not being prepared for, so it should have, we have, and, and this right here, this corrective action plan. Some of this stuff here is too premature for us to get it right now and making an action on it. I think it's no different than his project, that we all should look at this stuff before, it's, it's, I hate to say this, it's literally blindsiding you when you got this stuff here, and you, I don't even get this stuff. So I have to vote, I do have a vote, just because I'm one mayor here, but with all due respect, it shouldn't come at the last minute, like it's a, it's a, it's, oh, no one got it? Oh, I feel better now.
We didn't get it, we just got this from you.
But I mean, but how do you, but how do you take action, but, but how do you take action on someone's?
You're right, but this was on the agenda this morning.
Oh, okay.
And nobody got the information.
Oh, okay.
It's not like you, you know.
All right, because the last.
We all are in the same vote.
The last meeting was an agenda I never saw.
And this one, we're all in the same vote.
Okay, all right, good enough. All right, we'll go to approval minutes, we did that already, right?
No, we didn't.
Okay, approval minutes from March eleventh to fourteenth, April first.
No, they're gonna do separate.
Oh, that's the separate one, okay.
April seventh.
Okay, April seventh, two thousand fourteen, special meeting, have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug?
This is for April seventh.
April seventh.
Okay, yes.
Well, that one there is, it's not gonna go anywhere.
No, the other, the other.
You weren't here, no one was here, so it's, what are you gonna do with it? You can't do anything.
It's a lot of things there that are illegal, and they've been added, and there was no in the meeting anywhere, you know. So that would.
All right, we're gonna go to the manager's report, before manager, I'll go mayor's report, then manager's report. I'm at the end. I'd like to say something about the building, I'd like to clarify this before, I mean, it was in Y and N, the press has, has all this stuff here. With that building that was demolished there, we have a resolution, and the, and the board did this resolution in two thousand twelve to take down this building. All of these documents are not made up, they're all truth and fact, this is all fact. That building was approved by this board with a resolution to take that building down. The press, and the DA, and all who's saying all of this stuff, it's not accurate. We have a variance that was given to us by the DEC, Department of Labor, to say that that building and that rubbish can be cleaned up. A variance is something that, the equipment, we got a variance to clean up the equipment. It's set there for thirty days until I got a hold of a commissioner to demand to clean up the equipment. So they took the equipment, it was just sitting there. We're getting bills a thousand dollars a month because of nonsense. So the, the variance, we do have, there's no issue about a variance. I have all the documents here, these are all legal documents. So whoever's saying that that building, the nerve of the Democrat to say Mount Jenkins and the nonsense, I think that's very disrespectful. I think it's, there's no need for that in this village, to call, to say things like that.
That's my editor, and it was paraphrased. It was paraphrased, because that's what people are calling it.
And that's the only, and this is the only time I can actually clean up your mess, what the Democrat and the, and their record gives me, with the nonsense that they put out. This is the only time that I can defend myself, which I hate doing, but I have to, because I can't live with the nonsense they put out there. So I, so I do have the variance, that's the variance to clean it up, from the DEC. I do have the, I have, the gentleman came in this village, Sam's, with a, with a two-million-dollar bond, insurance bond. He has two million dollars bond, his insurance company has to clean that up. It's not the village, that's a two-million-dollar bond, I have his insurance bond. I have the paperwork from the, from, from the engineer and the, and the insurance company, everything that you're supposed to have with that nonsense over there, it's here. For him to illegally dump it, that's on the contractor, that has nothing to do with me. If someone takes down a building over there and they dump it in, down here, or in Pennsylvania, I don't follow them. The manager doesn't, do you follow contractors? Managers don't follow them, you gonna follow them to Pennsylvania if he's gonna put it in your backyard? No, but everything is clean, that's the way it went. So where are people getting their stories from? I'd like to know why they're putting that nonsense out. We have a demolition permit. The asbestos, there, if anyone in this village can get me an asbestos report, John LaGretti did the last inspection with asbestos in that building. If anyone in this village has the current and old asbestos reports saying there's asbestos in that building, please give it to me. I can't find it, that report was, it was inspected by asbestos people, and the only asbestos there is the shingles. So the other nonsense, I prove the fact. And if, and if anyone can prove this and prove me wrong, like I keep saying in this village, I will resign. Because it's all a bunch of lies, and it's all to sell papers and to make Y and N look like they're doing something, which they're not doing nothing, but fabricating a bunch of nonsense and making this village look terrible. So let's, let's start moving forward as far as making things happen. We, we do have a project that's pending in the village to build, to take that trash away and build the youth center. What is wrong with a youth center or a senior center? It costs six hundred thousand dollars, and we can't do that for the public here? The seniors right there were just saying they got one room. Do you, the taxes that you paid all your life, don't you deserve just one room? The Ted Strobel building? The crime that's running rampant in this village, don't you think these kids deserve a bigger playground to play in? You got a little shoebox building there. But yet you keep talking about crime, and what people are doing, and you're slandering the poor people, making them look like trash, but you, you're not offering them nothing. Offer them something, and maybe they won't be out here selling drugs and killing each other and robbing your house and your house. So let's just stop the nonsense. But that's the truth, though, I just wanted to clear that up. Another thing I have to clear up before I get, before we go forward? You want to change James Snowden's, James Snowden, he's, we moved that building there, because if, I'll take it, I'll take all of you people out here on a tour to his office downstairs. His office is as big as his table. This board wants to move, or someone on the board wants to take him out of that building and put it downstairs. We don't have room, no one's using that building. The income that James Snowden brought in this village is three times what Jim, what Dreckel brought in, as far as revenue to bring in this village. Dreckel brought in nothing, it's all documented, I have the, we have budgets, we, all this stuff is on paper. We, we, we merge services, that's why you merge services, to keep your cost down. So we gave James another fifteen thousand dollars, Dreckel was making thirty-five plus insurance, about forty-five, he makes fifteen. So we saved probably thirty thousand dollars merging it, that's common sense and that's business sense. So why would you put it back, put him back here? We're trying to save money. I'm gonna say it every time I'm here at this meeting, I pay taxes here, and I don't want my taxes going over two percent. I don't know if all you guys out here can afford your taxes, but I can't. So I am not putting people in places and, and all of this nonsense, because we can't, we can't hold our taxes down, because we want to give people jobs. This is a business to me, not a favoritism place here. So we'll go, we'll move forward. But I, just like I keep saying, anyone that talks out, everyone that talks the nonsense out here, I would love for you to just meet me. And just to see where I'm at, see where my numbers are, see where my budget is. Another thing, we had an audit, corrective, the new manager did the audit, a corrective action. Where is the, the million dollars that the mayor stole? You know damn well if I stole money, Jim Farrell would have me in jail, come on. So stop the nonsense of saying the mayor took a million dollars, and our budget's screwed up and all, where is the money? So stop the nonsense of saying the mayor took a million dollars and our budget's screwed up and all, where is the money? Where's, where's, where's the other record, uh, what's his name, Bill James? Every other week he was saying the village didn't pay payroll. Why are we paying payroll? What is wrong with this village? Someone tell me, and what is someone else gonna do that we're not doing? Honest to God, I'm not here to, to, it's just enough, is enough where people are coming out of there with so much nonsense that it's making me sick and people, my constituents, maybe not y'all, but my constituents, is making them sick with the nonsense that's going on in the village, and it's not fair. All right, we'll go to the manager's report, Ray? Oh, Tommy? Yeah?
The reason why we are here today for this case, because we did go to planning board last month, two months ago. When was, we go, we did go to planning board. Planning board said we cannot make any decision, we have to go to the village board. Now, village board told me we have to go to planning board, so who I have to go to?
We'll talk with the planning, did you, did they talk?
We went to planning board. We went to planning board, and planning board said we cannot make a decision, it's up to the village board.
All right, what we'll do, we'll check with the planning board, 'cause we have a new board and they don't know, though, they don't know that.
The village board has to make that decision.
They don't know that, the new board doesn't know that, so we'll see what happens. All right, um, we're gonna let the manager speak.
We did the right thing.
Yeah, the manager?
We did the right thing, but they wanted the village to make that decision.
All right. Okay, Ray?
Good evening, my name is Ray Nardesian, and I'm the village manager. Uh, the report will be rather short, only because I've only been here, uh, working for four days. The Department of Environmental Conserv- Conservation has completed its criminal investigation into the debris on Pleasant Street. The debris may be lawfully removed from the site. The village must follow whatever the Department of Labor and the DEC requires. We are, uh, have to follow in a lawful manner the rules and regulations they set forth. The village settled two grievances by, by employees on April eleventh, twenty fourteen. Now, the following persons have been appointed to the following positions, for the planning board, Hildy Rosenberg and Michael Levinson. To the ZVA board, Howard Perlman, Bonnie Hoffman, Ken Carpenter, Steve Melendez, and Steve Kaufman. Engineer will be Glenn Smith, and an alternate engineer in firm will be Fuller Builders. The village of Monticello with Barton and La Judas met with the USDA to discuss our pending water and sewer grants. I believe we're on the right track, and we are proceeding to answer all the questions the USA, uh, USDA has for us, and we're doing it in a timely manner. The county treasurer's office, um, met with the village today, and they agreed to help support, uh, our village treasurer, uh, department. Today we met to discuss future meetings, and that's about it, and, uh, I'll be back next, uh, meeting.
Okay, Jeff Siegel for, uh, presentation for Bagel Fest?
Thank you all for having me on the agenda tonight. So, first what I'd like to do is I'd like to thank the village of Monticello and the board, and present you all with this, and hopefully you'll hang it up in, uh, in the village hall. These are a copy of the resolutions from the village, as well as the town and the county, Bagel Festival logo, the peace sign that was out there that people signed, and just a shot of what happened on the street, because we appreciate all the work that the village put in and the assistance that the village gave with just helping get things set up, the permits, uh, working with the state, the DPW, everybody, really, you know, and, uh, turned out to be a great day, so we'd like you guys to, um, to have that.
All right, thank you.
The, um, I just put these quick packets together for you, it's really a one pager, but just so you could, you could follow along. So, the Bagel Festival, we brought about five thousand people came to town, after all the things that we went through to be the Bagel Capital and so on and so forth. And, uh, so this year is the second festival, it's gonna be bigger and better, we're anticipating fifteen thousand people to come to the Bagel Festival this year. And in doing so, there are a couple of things that I would like to ask the village to consider, um, you don't have to vote on it tonight, but if you would, you know, go back afterwards and think about it, and then, uh, you can get back to us. So, we wanna present the idea of giving Broadway an honorary name. This does not mean we're changing the name of the street, it doesn't mean we're changing anybody's mailing address, we're not changing nine-one-one. What we would like is for the village to approve, to give an honorary name to Broadway and call it Bagel Boulevard. And the reason for Bagel Boulevard is because where else would you have a Bagel Festival but at the Bagel Capital, which Senator Bonisak and Assemblywoman Gunther assisted in getting those resolutions passed in their respective houses, naming us, us, nobody else in the entire world, we're the Bagel Capital. So, where would you have a festival if it had the Bagel Capital, but it should be on Bagel Boulevard? So that's why we'd like to have an honorary name, we would come up with a sign that could be on, you know, Broadway, um, it's not one of those green signs, I think the signs are brown that would say, you know, Broadway, uh, would say Bagel Boulevard, and then underneath it would say, uh, Bagel Capital. So that's one thing that I would like you to consider. The other thing is, um, if you look in the little packet there I sent you, gave you, so, we are building a, um, statue. This is a seven to eight foot tall, three dimensional bagel that's being made out of steel. Steve Lerner from Quickway Metal is working with, uh, welder slash sculptor John Cook, who lives in Calicoon, um, because with the Bagel Festival, we do like to keep everything as much as we can within Sullivan County, um, and you Sullivan County people. So, there's two drawings, the, the other one here gives you a little more detail as to what this bagel sculpture would look like. Now, understanding, if you will, think about the statue, or statues, or monuments that are on the courthouse lawn, they live there forever. Well, the bagel statue, since it's gonna be seven to eight feet in diameter, which is pretty big, and be three dimensional, it would be great if it could live on the street, on the sidewalk, but being the beautiful sidewalks that we have, I wouldn't start digging up a sidewalk that, uh, you know, that we have in town. However, between the Bagel Bakery and where the new library is going to go, the sidewalks have those flower beds where the trees are planted in there and the flowers are planted, so there's two of those in between the Bagel Bakery and where the new Crawford Library is gonna go. One of those has a telephone pole in it, so there's not really much to do in that bed. In the other bed, there's just the three trees and then whatever little shrubs or bushes. I would propose to put the statue there, we take out the one tree, the other two trees would stay, and we'll move the tree someplace else, on, on Broadway in, in another bed or something. Understand that this statue, a four foot hole has to be dug, there's two steel plates that go in, and then there's like steel rods or rebar that goes through those plates that the sculpture gets screwed to, and then cement is poured, and we put the dirt back over. So that, and the reason it has to be four feet is because of the frost, so that it doesn't upheave. Now, this sculpture, at the Bagel Festival on August seventeenth, we're going to have the general public come, and everybody will have an opportunity to sign their name on that bagel, on that sculpture, and then it's gonna be clear coated and sealed after the festival is over, never to ever be signed on again. So kinda like, at Bethel Woods, they have bricks, no different than Disney, that people pay, they put their name on the brick, and then every time you go there, they say, oh, look at my name, I was, I was here in nineteen whatever, or two thousand whatever. Gonna do the same similar concept, because everybody wants to see their name on that giant sculpture. No different than, in your picture here, on the sign of the, uh, the peace bagel that was made, people were signing that board all day long at the festival last year. So, that sculpture, there, there is a lot of, uh, things to be considered and worth, and it could go someplace else, but the courthouse lawn, the Bagel Festival's not up by the courthouse lawn. The Bagel Festival's not over up by the Family Drugstore on Jefferson Street, it's kind of like from Saint Peter's on, on Prince Street and Liberty Street.
Could you give us a rendering of that sculpture at some point? Some kind of rendering of it? Better than that.
Um, I, I'll speak, I can speak to Steve Lerner and, uh, John Cook to make a-
So we all know what it looks like.
'Cause this is kinda like just my stick figure drawing, but, but it is pretty close as to what's required of, uh, having the sculpture live on the, in the ground. So that's, those are the two things that I wanted to ask about, Bagel Boulevard, and then we are making the statue, it does need to go someplace because it's, by the time it's finished, it's gonna weigh several hundreds of pounds, a crane is gonna have to put it down, it's not something that's going in the back of a, a pickup truck or whatnot. Um, one last thing, just so that people have a better understanding of what the Bagel Festival means. I did all this because I live in Monticello, I was born and raised in Monticello, went to Monticello High School, graduated, and never really left, I've been in business in town for, in a couple of different businesses, and currently with my entertainment company. So, I do it because I'm passionate about the community in which I live, and for what it takes to just rant and rave and complain and everything else, you may as well do something positive. So, this goes to the extent of, and so that people could really, you know, understand the level of what this means about doing good things for the community. Five thousand people came, statistically, and I'm using low numbers, people spend a hundred dollars to go to wherever for the day. And these numbers are available through the, uh, Visitors Association and the tourism industry. So that means we brought a half a million dollars to the Bagel Capital last year. Half a million dollars. This year with fifteen thousand people, that means we're looking at one point five million dollars for the Bagel Festival. That's a lot of, that's a lot of stuff, just to have people come, everybody has a great time, puts us on the map nationally in a, in a different light, because people, they, they laugh about bagels, but they also like bagels, and they eat bagels all over the world. They'll know us as the Bagel Capital. And, lastly, is that all things going forward, in two thousand and fifteen, we would work towards not having a weekend festival, but inviting all those people to come up for the weekend and finish off their weekend on Sunday at the Bagel Festival. When people come for a weekend, they spend five hundred dollars. Now you're talking about seventy-five million dollars coming to the Bagel Capital. So, I want you to think carefully about Bagel Boulevard and about the sculpture. Because those are things that will assist those numbers and the tourists to come to Monticello. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's some bagel cards to put at the-
Jeff, you should be commended for your efforts, the Bagel Festival was a wonderful idea. Now, I don't wanna dampen anything by telling you, Broadway is a state road, we'll have little or nothing to say. We may encourage it, but it's not the village that'll make that final decision.
About putting the statue on the sidewalk?
No, no, not the statue, the sign.
Well-
We'll do our best.
I, I do, I do understand that, I appreciate that, but the state kind of already said yes since they passed those resolutions. So it's a little, it would be a little hard for them to go backwards. It was the reason why I asked my senator and my assemblywoman to get those resolutions voted, signed, and passed, as opposed to a proclamation from the state, because a proclamation, they can be handed out like Cracker Jacks, but resolutions, they have to vote and pass it, so there, that's really what the difference is. So in asking them for a sign, and since we're not changing the mailing address or anything else, just an honorary, no different than the Levon Helms Parkway up in Woodstock, no different than you go somewhere and you see it says Martin Luther King Boulevard, but nobody's address is Martin Luther King Boulevard, it might be a hundred and seventy-ninth street, and, whatever it is. So, I'm confident the state would, would, would agree, and, and, and hopefully the village would be behind, behind that.
And I'm confident that Michael will look into it, and, and be able to definitively tell us whether or not that can be done.
Good, thank you.
Okay, ten, approval of bills to be paid the amount of four hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents, can I have a motion? I'd like to motion, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Carmen? Resolution directing the village manager to oversee the arrangements of the clerk's office, and to move the building department and all its files back to village hall, can I have a motion?
Make a motion with a discussion.
All right, a second with a discussion. Doug?
My opinion is that the building inspector code enforcer should be housed in village hall, however, um, with the traffic in and out of the neighborhood facility at the moment, I, I think until we see a, uh, a more concrete plan as to how this would be implemented, I think it might be in our best interest, the table is for now.
I, I have a comment, I, even, uh, Gordon say that we say money, we don't, because they're heating when, three times more than we were spending before, and I see these vouchers with the electric, and they're heating over there, so, all those people coming here and there to pay the bills, go back and forth, and it's not fair to, also to them, so, it, it should be moved wherever the files are more protected for the village resident, which is the village hall, you know. Uh, over there, it's, uh, it's like a, people go in and out, and all the files that belong to, tax payer that we're responsible in to maintain it, is to just go all over, go everywhere, and people say, I, I, when they come here, I saw it a lot of time, they'll say, now I have to come here, I have to go back there, why they don't say, and people now they're coming back for the summer, it's complaining, saying the same thing. So, um, m- my opinion is that the building, uh, the building, the buil- the building department should be here, it belong in the village hall.
The, um, the, the money that we're saving now in that, in that building there, we had mobile medic there, they were paying, I think, uh, twelve hundred dollars a month, and they were paying, they were, we were paying heat, electric, everything in that building, and they were only paying twelve hundred dollars a month. I wish I could get some, a deal like that, but now they're out of there, the bays are closed, there's no, there is now our heating bills is going down drastically. We have James in there now, the heat's at sixty-eight, before it was cranking high, the bills in that building, and I show, and again, I keep saying the same thing. All you have to do in this village to see who's right and wrong is come to this village and look at all the numbers, look at the budgets, and look at the numbers, and then you judge this board and judge everyone you, around here, what, the truth is what's here. And that building is saving us money, we, I have it right here, we bought, Mr. Snowden only been there four months, he bought in three times the amount of money that Mr. Greco was bringing in. That's not here to exaggerate anything, it's the truth. So we are saving money, he can't, the building, if you put him back in there, his, you can't even, we have plans, that's as long as this, he's in a cubbyhole. You guys all pay taxes here, go look downstairs when you're done and see what, what kinda office he's gonna have when we put it back there, and that building, and it's not being used for nothing. That's a municipal building, that's a village building, so as, as, we have, as far as, as far as, uh, files and, and, and what's safe, that building is the court there. There's, it's cambered, they have more security in there than this building here. That's the honest, ask Ms. Finn, she put all that money in there, she's put a lot of money in that building for her court, so it's gonna, it, it, it covers that whole building. So you could put four knots in there and you'll be all right.
And we also went through the process with our auditors, our auditors was there last month.
Right.
It showed us the process that they want us to collect the money, we also, uh, protect the seniors at the same time, because there's so much traffic in that building at this time. If nobody there supervising that building, we gonna have some problems, you know, man. And that's the bottom line.
And this is another thing, the, the, this was, that building, part, and, and not trying to go tit for tat with Mrs. Rue, but this is a, this civil service, this is merged together under one department, right here, this is, this is what we have, so it's not illegal, and I, I mean, we'll talk about it.
I, I gonna respond to that.
But I don't wanna go back and-
No, I, I gonna respond to that, I do.
I guess my comment is, is that I, I agree that the building department should be in with the rest of the municipal, um, op- offices. My concern is that I think we're moving too quickly with it, and I would like us to kind of take a step back, have the manager present a plan on- on how best to see if the building department should move back in, how it can fit within here. I always thought Ted Strobel was a community center. It's now turning more into a municipal offices. So I would like to see that that return to a community center and be able to be used by the community. And so if that can work out, that's what I would like to see. And so that's why I think we are premature with this resolution.
It's always somebody has to be in that building.
But I, I just want to, I just want to respond to that because here, December seventeen, December eighteen, the clerks sent to the civil service that he was a code enforcement and building department and, and the recreation department. The civil service say, no, he cannot have two civil service employee. So after that, they don't call a meeting. And then they send another paper to civil service and say, oh, no. Okay, we make a mistake. Here it is, building department, here is a code enforcement. You know, it's procedures there and the civil services.
Let's just table it, we'll just table it and Ray, we could all look at it and see. I think it's the right, we, we'll table it. We can table it, we can table it.
And if you could come back at the next meeting?
Public comments at the end. Yeah, public comments at the end, yeah. We'll just, we'll table it and see, and we'll talk about it.
Make a motion.
Second? Okay, roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes, table.
Okay, we'll table it. All right. Resolution directing department heads to park all vill- village vehicles at Village Hall at the end of each week workday and the exception of chief of police or lieutenant when the chief is on vacation for emergency purposes. Have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this one.
Let's discuss it.
Oh, you want to discuss it? Do I take back my motion?
I'll make a motion with discussion.
All right, second? With a second? Okay, discussion?
I think again, there's some additional issues regarding this resolution that have to be looked into. And also, Chief of Police, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't have a contract or terms of employment, correct? Well, I think that when we address this, that needs to be addressed also. I think he needs terms of employment and/or a contract to outline what, what his benefits are and if that would include or not include taking home a vehicle.
Well, I was part of, I wasn't part of the hiring practice, but the chief was aware that when he was hired at eighty-five thousand, he knew that, as far as I was concerned, that I was trying to take a halt on all vehicles. The chief knew when he was hired that he could not take a vehicle home back and forth. It was, and the chief did ask me about the vehicle. And I think it's too much money to have a vehicle go back to Liberty back and forth when a man's making eighty-five thousand dollars. We got to gas that car up, then we got to service that car. We can't afford, again, we just can't afford it. And I will say something, I did let Mr. Snowden have a car because he, he, he go, fires, codes, everything he responds to in this village, everything. The chief, we have a lieutenant on, a lieutenant on staff here. If, if whatever happens in this village right now, the chief is at his house. You have officers there, you have a lieutenant there, you probably have a sergeant there. So the chief can just mosey on in his car and go to the scene. There is nothing that drastic in this village where he has to get in that vehi- vehicle and haul ass up, excuse me, haul up there while he has his lieutenant, his sergeant, and his officers there. That's everywhere. And I was just telling, with all due to the chief here, Mr. Chief is in Beacon here. And I asked Mr. Chief Solomon here, why doesn't he have a car? He's in Beacon. Why doesn't he have a car to go back and forth? You know why? Probably? It's cost, gas, we can't, that Beacon probably can't afford it. So I'm just, the only thing I'm doing, it's not anything, it's not being spiteful or anything. It's about saving money in this village, that's all.
Well, I don't think the car is a whole part of that. I think, I think he's entitled to a, a, a contract, a terms of employment. That was never done.
Okay.
That was, you guys didn't do it then, you just said he had an expectation, he was making all this money, that this is the way things are going to be. Well, it should be in black and white.
I didn't even know he didn't have a contract. I didn't hire him. John DeGrecchi did.
Well, I, I think that needs to be done and, and.
Promised? We know where that comes from.
Regarding the other, regarding the other issues in this resolution, I think that the village attorney needs to look at some of the stuff and.
Okay. All right, we'll table it.
Make a motion to table.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Jill?
Doug, yes.
Carmen? Okay. Okay, re- uh, resolution authorizing repair of two, two thousand and three Chevy Impala for the police department by fifty-two automotive mount, fifteen hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Appropriation twenty-six eighty, can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
A second.
Roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And Carmen? Resolution approving the securing of long, long-term financing for water ban two thousand thirteen A. This ban was for new Nelsia Water Main and rehab of number one and six filters at water plant. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, it's going to be quick for a second.
Okay, Doug?
Claude, is this one of your, is this one of your projects here?
Natural, natural we did already, we, the projects, it was.
Can I just get a second before it goes into discussion?
Second.
Carmen?
Yeah, it's second.
Yes, Doug, what's the question?
No, is this one of your projects, Claude?
Okay, okay.
I just have a question on the long term. Is there, is there a length on that long-term financing? Or we don't know, this is just going to allow us to go and seek long-term financing?
And speaking with the water superintendent Phil Clemente, he did ask me to relay to the board that this resolution is only authorizing them to seek long-term funding. It has not, nothing's been placed yet. They first need the approval to do it.
Okay, roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Carmen? Okay, resolution authorizing payment to Phoenix Graphics in amount of fifteen hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents from appropriation fourteen fifty point four eleven for two thousand and fourteen village elections. Current account, three thousand dollars, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Okay, roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing payment to Sullivan County Board of Elections, two thousand and fourteen village elections. Expense amount, one thousand one hundred and two dollars and forty-five cents. Appropriation fourteen fifty point four eleven. Current balance, fourteen hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Carmen? Resolution reaffirming the village board desire to continue moving forward with twenty-one point five million dollar water treatment plant improvement project and continuing seeking funding from USDA for the project. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it, I just have a quick question.
Okay, Doug with a question?
Does that commit us to that number or?
That blank and Anthony can explain it, he was, I think so. Anthony can explain.
It doesn't commit us to that number specifically.
It commits us to a scope of, scope of work that that twenty-one point five entails?
Yeah, yeah.
Anthony Egan with Barton and La Judas, the village's water and sewer is here. We met with the village manager last week and we discussed the project overall. And the village manager told us that he was meeting with USDA on Friday. And we attended that meeting at the village manager's request. And with the village manager and USDA, USDA just needs to reaffirm this board's desire to continue moving forward with the project. In, on November, this board, although different members, passed a resolution for securing financing up to twenty-one and a half million dollars. And they've passed a resolution for a project up to twenty-one and a half million dollars. And this is just reaffirming that same intent. It doesn't at all limit you to that and only that.
Okay.
And Joe, and Joe's father recommended to.
Okay, roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Resolution reaffirming the village board desire to continue with the application to USDA for water project in amount of five million nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Can I have a motion? Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call Jill?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Carmen? Resolution accepting corrective action plan and authorizing the same to be submitted to the Office of New York State Comptroller. Can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
All right, second?
I don't.
This is the corrective action? We just got, we just got this today, so it seems like it's pretty standard stuff.
But we had to do it soon, so you, you, I don't see.
What is it that, that?
Just, I was, you had a copy there?
Ray, huh?
We just got that.
This is all that, why they want, they want us to correct this in order for us also for the fifty million. This has to be done to send it to the USDA.
Private, three of them are, are still, there's no corrective action given. Or are we not looking at the latest? I think recommendation three, eight, and nine are.
I'm running, running by, just running by, just to prove it blind. Unfortunately, I don't have a copy yet. If you'd like a little background on it, in January, the state comptroller issued a draft findings report on village board oversight. And in that report are six, nine recommendations. And those nine recommendations were responded to initially by a letter from the village. And some of these nine were already addressed at that time. In this report, it requests a corrective action plan, basically indicating the village's intent to address these recommendations. In discussing this and the findings with the village manager, these responses have been prepared on behalf of the village. Again, some of them were responded to in the village's response, which was included in a letter dated January twenty-fourth in the management report, such as the hiring of a, a new village manager is a response to one of them. The hiring of a village treasurer is another response. So that's some changes in management that the village has taken. Another change, which was referred to tonight by the mayor, was having accurate records of building and, and recreation department finances, which the, the building code enforcement officer has been doing. And he sat with the auditor and went through that. The village, over the past, I'll call it four months, has made great strides by completing the two thousand and twelve audit and is soon to complete the two thousand and thirteen fiscal year in, in anticipation of its budget preparation for two thousand and fifteen.
Since we just got this, how quickly this is needed? I know this is.
The comptroller's office requested a response within ninety days. So I'm, I, the intent is not to just ram this through. We're willing, I think, to accept any feedback and any comments on it and work with the village manager board directly. If you wanted to work with the village manager on fine tuning these the way they are.
Can we vote on this next week?
Two weeks. I think that would be okay.
May sixth we have it, then next week.
Yeah, I think that will be okay because it was ninety days from February. And I think, I think that meeting, the auditor may be here presenting his findings as well.
If that's not okay, could you let us know and we, if we have to, we can, can be in a special?
Okay.
Is that okay, Gordon?
Yeah, yeah. I'm pretty comfortable with it. I read, I, I've been part of it though.
The answers are very generic, not specific. And we can change those in the future date. So we're really not bound by anything here.
So you want to vote on the draft tonight maybe?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, you want to do the draft? I saw it before.
It's only because of the, of the letter from the USDA, that's the only thing.
Well, that, it all ties back into the sewer.
So we could vote on accepting this draft proposal and we'll have to fine tune it in a couple of weeks if necessary.
Right, you, accepting the draft and then all the board members review it and provide any comments to the village manager. And then any comments would be thereby incorporated?
Right.
And then submitted, is that, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, I, I.
Well, you have to vote on the final one at some time.
Right.
This is a draft.
We vote on accepting a draft without?
It's not, it's probably yes, because it's been corrected.
If you have any comments, but then at some point you need to vote on the final.
Well, we should be able to do that in two weeks hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay.
But at least. That's, that, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, okay, roll call Jill?
To approve the draft, but we can still provide, oh, to accept the draft.
And provide comments to the village manager.
Okay, yes.
All right, Doug, yes. Carmen?
Yes.
Resolution recent. What's that? Oh, that's all right.
I have a couple more things that you want to put me at the end, or you want to talk about in the water.
No, you can go, you want to go now? You can.
Seventeen, I make a motion to table. The lawyer recommended table.
Seventeen?
Yes.
No.
Where, where we are?
We're in nineteen.
Seventeen?
Twenty.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, twenty. So, twenty, you recommend to table.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I make a motion to table.
I'll second it. Okay, roll call?
Yeah.
Uh, Doug, yes. Carmen? Okay. Yep.
This is a, a proposal that we prepared back in January. We submitted to Phil. He had an opportunity to review it. And we discussed this with New York State DEC. Basically, this is for chemical bulk storage at the water treatment plant and the Park Avenue well site. This, we're looking to roll into the overall five point nine million dollar water project. The, the budget for these improvements were included in that. But in the fall, the village is in receipt of a notice of violation from DEC. And through some of the discussions, it seems like the village hasn't responded to DEC. And the longer the village waits to respond to DEC, the.
Worse it's going to get.
That's, that's a very good way of putting it. And the fine could go from a slap on the hand to something a lot bigger. So what we would suggest is that the village board review this and, and the manager review it and then provide authorization to move this ahead without any financing from USDA. Because the village is going to have to do this, whether the financing comes or doesn't come. That's kind of the notice of violation. There was a meeting, which the manager, we talked to the water superintendent about. There was a meeting between the village, the village's attorney at the time, the water and sewer superintendent, and DEC attorney. And they requested a reply and that reply hasn't been given yet, is my understanding. So where it stands, I don't know, but the longer it goes on without a response, the worse it's going to get.
So what do you get, where are you going to get the money from? The upfront money to repair it?
For their grants.
It's one of the, this is, when the corrective action plan is complete and submit and filed with OSC, when the last item, which is the change in management style in the org chart, which is the last item from the February sixth letter addressed and submitted to USDA, they will then look at the entire wastewater project and the village finances that the auditor sent today. They'll look at all of that and they're intending to re-underwrite the entire loan grant package. And due to the finances and the size of the project, there is an opportunity, although not guaranteed, to get a larger grant. Not guaranteed. It might be, as USDA alluded to in its February sixth letter, it might be a more favorable financing package. We don't know what it is, we don't know what the terms are. We don't know what administrative requirements you're going to have to incorporate into the project in order to continue moving forward. All we know is that we're working to respond to the February sixth letter. And once that's done, then USDA will do its own underwriting in between the state office in Syracuse and the office in Washington DC.
So they should, so they're going to, so we're not going to do anything until we get the money from the USDA then? We're not going to do anything in, in advance to fix this?
You're already, you've already fixed filters one and six.
Right, right, yeah.
You've already, this board has already authorized the fixes to filters two, three, four, and five. This board has already brought up and discussed the leaking tanks on Hospital Hill.
Right.
I know one of the concerns with the water and superintendent is the flocculators are, are failing. I know another concern are the headers in the East Dillon and West Broadway pump stations are failing. I know those are all concerns and they're all in the PER report. I believe it was sent out to everybody. If not, I have a copy. In December, this board authorized us to submit the amendment to USDA.
The old board hasn't approved.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
And then there's just... We've received, on behalf of the village, we've received correspondence from the Delaware River Basin Commission. During our negotiations with MRMIEPR for the water agreement, they notified us that the water withdrawal docket for the village has expired, and the village has to, uh, reapply for the permit. We brought this to the board's attention. The board at that time then directed us to bring it to the village attorney at that time, and that was in August of last year. And as of the beginning of March, our contact with the attorney at that time said nothing has been progressed on it. So basically, the, the village's docket to withdraw water from the Delaware River Basin has expired, and it needs to be renewed. So, I, I don't know what the board's desire is with that, but that's something that needs to be discussed. And, uh, two weeks ago, we received a letter from the RBC indicating that the docket for wastewater will expire next year, and all the documents are required a year in advance. So, I will bring both of these to the, the manager for his...
I can work that out for you, Carmen.
Yeah. So, I'd like the, I'd like the village board to pass a resolution to authorize the village attorney to work on this.
He's already known, he's, he already hired.
Thanks, Anthony. Is that it? That's it? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yep, thanks. All right, twenty-one. Resolution avoiding any agreement and bids on the old justice court debris for the village of Monticello Cabo motion?
Make that motion.
Second? I just want to have one comment on this. Those two bids, the bids that came out, there were two bids with the same thing about this debris here. There were two bids, we had, matter of fact, we had three, three bid openings, and they were way too high, so we, we didn't do the bids. So, the last bid was sixty-two five, and that was a, a smaller contractor. And then we had a union contractor, I think it was, what was the, what did they bid at that, the union? What was it?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five. So the lowest bid was sixty-two five. The unions in this village, I met with the two, I met with the president of the union before the elections in the village, and I met with him in my office, the president of the union here. I met with him in the office, I told him that that would have, it would have to go at a bid, and the lowest bid gets it. Prevailing wages, you, it doesn't have, it doesn't have to be union wages, but prevailing wages, you can still get the bid on prevailing wages. The gentleman has the, the lowest bid at sixty-two five. I'd like to make a note, I met with the president of the, the, uh, Local Seventeen down in my office when election was going on. I seen Local Seventeen and this village during election, I have a pamphlet, a paper, with that same president in the election with the new parties here, with a picture of him, and I seen him taking pictures. I seen him handing out flyers, he did things, I don't know where it's at on that, but I think that's very conflicting when you have the union president that was in my office demanding to get this bid. And now, we put out two bids, and this man is the lowest bid. I don't know, it's because I didn't help him with his election and I don't make deals, but you know something? I don't think he should be, I think this man deserves the bid, it's proper, it's legal, and I'll go to court with this bid. And everything this man is doing, it's proper, there's no connections, there's nothing. So, I would like the board to, to consider what I just said, and they can vote it or do whatever they want.
I, I just want to make a comment.
All right.
Excuse me, no public comment.
Yeah.
It's not public comment. Uh, you know, um, this is what's with the DEC investigation, and now, we have to start new again. When you comment before that the board voted to turn down that building, that was voted after the building turned down. You say that you don't have no records or advestos. Well, let me tell you, I had two thousand and five, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven report from an engineer who came here hundred times and say, we need to follow a process to remove first the advestos that will cost you, and it's in a tape there. And it's twenty-seven thou, up to twenty-seven thousand dollars, and the village employees can do the rest of the work, and that way, the village can save money. So when you decided to turn down that court and pay five thousand dollars, and no advice the guys now, who their contractors are suing the village, because they all say that they are sick, because they never told it that they have advestos. Now they all saying they're sick. So, I just want to clarify that we need to repeat again, excuse me, no public comment. You know, I, I just say, we have, we, excuse me, no public comment, you know? So I just wanted to respond to that, it is not anybody political, and it's anybody, the DA don't even have to do nothing with that. It's a DEC who took over to the, to the debris, that's it, that's the only thing I can say.
Again, again, anyone that, I'm not going to go back and forth, the paperwork is right here. Anyone that want to look at the paperwork, again, if you have reports on asbestos in that building, I would love for you to show me, Ray, can you give it to Ray, James, me, or Doug, or somebody?
You have it, the reporter, the engineer, we all have it.
Okay, but, we'll move on, we'll move on for that, but the paperwork is here. Anyone that wants to see this stuff here, please see it opposed to just listening to someone saying the sky is falling. Please, just look at the paperwork. Okay, sure, I'll make a copy of everything.
This is what the municipal question was called, the village does not possess or maintain, I'd love a copy.
And we add it to that resolution.
Okay.
The resolution to turn down that building.
Doug's got a, Doug's got a comment.
There's a motion, there's a motion, there's a motion on, and I just want to point out one thing, I'm not taking any position, that the letter that was sent to the village by the district attorney of April eleven, twenty fourteen, which indicated that the DEC had completed its investigation into debris located on Pleasant Street, as a result of this, all of the debris may lawfully be removed from the site. Please note that the village should follow whatever Department of Labor and DEC requirements are imposed to lawfully remove the debris. The village manager is in touch, and will be in touch with the Department of Labor and DEC, and we have to see what additional, if any, requirements are necessary, and therefore, at the present time, it's, in my opinion, being sure to have that, uh, bid it out. Until we can see what the Department of Labor, what the DEC requires, give it to our engineer with all the necessary specs, and come up with proper specs.
Excuse me, one minute, I want to give you this here, these are the paperwork, what I was saying, this is the variance right here. This is what the DEC...
I'm just reading the letter.
I want to show you this, you haven't seen this, right?
I haven't seen a lot.
I know you're hired by the board here, and you have to do what you got to do, but look, look.
I haven't seen a lot.
Look, read this here, this tells you right there that that building is safe and clear.
I'm just reading, I'm reading what the district attorney letter said.
The district attorney, read that after the district attorney's decision. All right, read that one, and you'll see the, the true fact, this is not politics, the true facts. All right. Okay, roll call with the, uh, so what are we going to do, take, uh, rebid it?
No, the, 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 the motion is to rescind the bid that's there. Do nothing at this time until the village manager can discuss it with the Department of Labor and with the DEC to see what requirements they are going to require.
Okay, okay.
I take advice, I make a motion when...
Second, okay, roll call, Jill?
Yes.
Uh, Larissa?
Yes.
And Carmen? Okay. Okay, we're almost done with this here. Resolution settling lawsuit between Mobile Medic and the village of Monticello, and with the village agrees to be paid fifteen thousand dollars, cabo motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Now, another one. See, I was in office when all of this stuff happened, so everything that I have to do is sit up here and, and clarify the truth. So no one can say, he says, she says, all of this stuff, what I'm saying, I have all the backing. So you can't say I'm not sitting here BSing anybody here. Everything that I said so far is that, it's the truth. And if it's not the truth, the great Allah could take me right now for telling a lie. But you know something? This is all true facts. Again, Mobile Medic, over there, one of the good old boys around Monticello, had one of the village, municipal buildings in that bay getting twelve hundred dollars a month. The board prior to that tried to give it to him for eight hundred dollars a month. How do we, how are we supposed to pay our bills and our taxes if you're just going to play that friendship again? We can't afford to have Mobile, I seen his books, Mobile Medic, the man makes a lot of money. So, it's not friendship, me and Albie were good friends, but you know something? I can't give him a, a fair deal, it has to be fair across the board. I don't owe him no favors, it's business like everyone else. That man was there, he owed us eighteen thousand dollars, and he will not pay it, so we went to court with him. Now the board wants to rescind everything and says, give it back that, Albie pays fifteen thousand dollars, and probably in another couple of months, he'll be back in that building at probably a thousand dollars a month, wondering why we can't pay the heat bill.
You know, the lawyer, the lawyer, I want to say something, the Mobile Medic...
Eighty thousand, eighty...
No, excuse me.
Eighty thousand.
Mobile Medic, Mobile Medic, it was, it was a lawsuit. Your attorney from Rockland County talked from this lawsuit since two thousand and eleven, more than sixty thousand dollars. The village lost a nonsense lawsuit that the government was not there when they did the agreement in two thousand and five. I was not there in two thousand and five, so they were suing for something that ridiculous, really. So now, he spends another forty thousand dollars in a nonsense lawsuit. So to finish this, instead of go and continue with the lawsuit, that your lawyer in Rockland County already took the taxpayers' money to Rockland County, uh, at least now, we have an attorney, Sully Van Conde, who spends taxes in Sully Van Conde, and at least advise us right, and to do the right thing. So I'm, I, it's a motion and a second.
Roll call, roll call, Jill?
Yeah.
Doug, yes, Larissa?
Yeah.
Carmen, okay. All right, what we have to do now, we have some addendums. Resolution setting a date and time for the village annual litter, litter plaque, two thousand and fourteen, cabo motion?
Uh, you know what, it's a day, I make a motion, but we're gonna discuss the date.
Oh, setting a date and time.
Yeah, the, um, Sully Van, um, Sully Van's, uh, litter plaque is made for April twenty-sixth. So I saw it in the papers, so you, we want to do it maybe the same day or different day, I don't know. I don't know how the board wanted to do it.
Whatever's good for...
That's good, yeah, it says Saturday, April twenty-sixth to Sunday, May fourth, to allow each community to participate, so...
All right.
Probably Saturday is better than Sunday, but, I mean, any of the community groups can do it.
Well, Saturday, the, the, I don't, I, I don't know, you know, when we available, I don't...
Any day.
I mean, can we do it the same day, that way, everybody cleaning in the same time, you know? If it's a good day, do it, no, no.
Any, yeah, it's good.
Twenty-six, that way, everybody doing it, and they also give you the plastic bags, you know that, the garbage bags, everything they give you.
I will have it to twenty-six. Okay. Yes, Jimmy Steinberg, he'll give me bags, all right. Roll call, Jill?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yeah.
Larissa?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing rise of Sullivan County Walk on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, nine to twelve. Uh, waiving application fees, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, Jill?
Yes.
Uh, Doug?
Yeah.
Larissa?
Yes.
And Carmen?
Yes.
Okay, resolution authorizing Monticello Little League procession on Saturday, May third, two thousand and fourteen, eight thirty to nine thirty, waiving all fees, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Jill?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yeah.
Larissa?
Yes.
And Carmen?
Yes.
And we have four, uh, what is that, rescinding police commission?
Resolution setting public hearing date to rescind or repeal local law number ten of two thousand and eleven entitled Police Commission.
And that's saying what, you want to, they want to get rid of the police commission?
Well, yeah, that's May six, we can do a public hearing, comments, May six, just to set a public hearing.
I'd, I'd like to comment on that real quick. This, this police commission was created by the mayor, the village mayor, me, I created it. There was a lot of, there was a lot of complaints with the law enforcement in the village of Monticello. I know Doug is quite aware of it, I know the district attorney doesn't want it, but Fallsburg has it, and other municipalities have it. This summer, I went to two shootings in Poughkeepsie. Two shootings, two armed males, black males, were shot and killed, I went to their funerals. And what I, I've always said that we need policing in, in this community, we have to know the people in this community. It's not us against them, we live here, I don't care if you're poor, white, black, whatever it is. We need better relations with the police department in this community. Just like in, in Poughkeepsie, God forbid, if one of these kids gets shot by, by a police officer in this village, you're going to have a lot of crap on your hands. So I created the commission only to come, I used to meet with Doug. When someone comes with a complaint, they say, Mayor, can I come and talk to you about the police did this to me? Most of the times, those complaints are frivolous, and they don't even go anywhere. But someone comes in and they can air it out, and you get the guy, it's all off his chest, and he, most of the time, they don't come. So we had this little commission. It's no power, I couldn't care less if I'm commissioner, dog catcher, mayor, dead man, living, you know, it's not a title. So please, forget about the titles, about the barriers, the commissioning, I couldn't care less about a commission. So, what we need is something, when something happens, who does the, who does the community come to when stuff, when, when something's going to hit the fan? There should be a dialogue, where he could come to me, or come to someone and says, hey, can we talk and get this thing resolved? That's all, that's all the commission was. So now you want to kill the commission. Mrs. Davis was on the commission, she was a civilian, it was working pretty good, we were just complaints, that's all it was. It's not to take over the police department, the mayor don't want to take over Monticello Police Department. They have a job to do, I applaud them for doing their job, I don't want their job, I'm retired. Another ten years, I'll be in my graveyard, so I don't want any job. So let's just, why is it so hard for us to just have a commission? Everyone else can do it, or is it because it's me?
No, I, 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 I really, I really, I really have to comment on this.
We're going, we're just vote.
I, you know what, this commission spends more than seventy thousand dollars in between lawyers and everything, so, you know.
Carmen, Carmen, let's just vote. Okay, we'll vote, roll call, Jill?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yes.
Uh, Larissa?
Yes.
And Carmen? I think that's it on the addendum.
Can I have the public hearing date, please?
Um, when is it, May six? May six. Okay, we're going to have mayor's comment, I commented enough for you guys here. Enough talk. Public comment, five minutes, please, anyone, sir?
Good evening, I'm addressing the entire board, my name is Mr. Crowe, and I'm on the ZVA. Just a point of reference, zoning board of appeals job is to examine anyone applying for a relief from an existing zone or code. I would ask the board, no matter what the case, that if anything comes before you that requires a ZV, possibly a ZVA, that you refer to the ZVA. We examine the applicant, we examine the pros and cons of the project to the village, and then we make a decision. And for any project, especially with things changing, we'd like to be able to affect the entire process and make an intelligent decision that's both fair for the applicant and fair for the village. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the president of the Monticello seniors, and we meet at the Ted Strabel Building. Since James has taken over, the building is clean, it's been painted, the floors are done. He has moved us into... He has moved us into another room where we can put our pictures and notices. If we need anything, he's there and Jimmy is there. One of the things that really bothered me with Michael Greco is that he up and announced that he was leaving. It felt like, you know, you have a date and the guy never showed up and we had no one to go to. So when James came in, everything changed. And he has generated a lot of money, which I think is important because you're heating the building, lighting the building, we go there for lunch, at least it's clean and we can go to somebody who's always there for us. And the second thing I wanted to know is, do you have an ad in the paper for, um, a manager of the village? For the last year and a half, the old board wanted a manager. They got one, he was here, I guess, a week, but I haven't seen any ads for a new manager, so I hope you are considering that.
I think the board should start advertising for a manager, taking applications, I think, because he's only into three months, I think.
We, you know what, we, we don't have the money to hire, really, it's only thirty-six thousand dollars. Who manager is gonna work here for thirty-six thousand dollars? The mayor was taking, no, that was given to the other mayor manager, but there was no, there's no money. I just, just saying, I don't wanna say anything else.
I'd like to say that, um, um- I'd like to say that, um, the last meetings you had and the guys, you guys had, some of the board members had voted against not having Janine. I mean, mostly, all, all you guys on, on the board have several incomes coming in your, in your house. And this woman here, she has a child, she has a family. And you guys was about to put her, if you had the power, to put her on the unemployment line, and I, I don't think that's right. Also, with Mr. Snowden here, you know, that building there wasn't really used for nothing. I mean, you know, we had the senior citizens coming, we had, uh, different people coming in and paying to use the building. This man has proved himself time and time again. This man professionalism is like here, okay? I mean, I've even dealt with him on several situations with my own family. And this man doesn't, doesn't take to nobody. If he knows you, if you're doing wrong, you're gonna get it. Okay? So this man is not favoritism to nobody. I believe that that building down there, it started to be a purpose, it was the dome, it turned into the building it is now. After years, it started decaying, you had a, um, guy in there working, I mean, he was doing this, basically, he was in the office. You know, the community part of the building is the big rooms, the office, that's a office. Let that man stay in that office. You just heard from one of our senior citizens that this man gives him a, uh, security when, when he's there. Also, you have Josephine, which moved her, her, uh, her court there. I mean, I, I, I can't understand why would you wanna put him back in that little hovel downstairs? I mean, that's, me, I think that the decisions that the board start, is making already, it's like the decisions that they made long time ago when they moved people off Broadway. After they moved the folks off Broadway, the businesses started dying. If you, if anybody that was here during this time, the businesses started dying, next thing you know, to take them all out was Walmart. It took everything out, whatever was left, it was gone. Okay? These little, little decisions that you make cost the, the taxpayers and it also costs the people that live here. Jeff just came in here and explained his agenda and what he wanted to do in a positive sense. I'm not here to like bash anybody, but like I was saying before and a lot of times that I talk, people need to stop coming here, running their mouth and put something together that works. This man has put something together that works. So that's what we need to be focused upon, not whether or not James need to move back into a little small cubby hole. That's like showing that-
This is small place.
Yeah, you, it's like you, you, you know, you're trying to authenticate yourself already. Give that man, let him finish out his term doing what he does and let him bring that money that he's making to the village. I ask you this, if you're gonna be fair, start off being fair now. Think about that woman's job and think about that man here.
I'm not standing to knock anyone, everybody has their own opinion, but just on today, I walked into the center to speak with Mrs. Snowden about a project that I wanted to do. He never once came out of the office, as a matter of fact, he had the young lady at the desk who was quite rude, close the door as if to say his office was closed off right now. So if you're going to be there, be there for the entire public, not just, just those selected few who haven't had run-ins with the mayor or, or whoever else. I know I'm not liked because I stand for what I believe in, but my opinion, my project, I'm speaking now. You had your turn when you served the board, let me speak, please. No, just wait, wait, I'm, I'm speaking, sir, 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 use of my five minutes, uh. I'm speaking from my experience. When I act on something, it's because of the experience I've had dealing with people. I had very unprofessional treatment today, just from Mr. Snowden alone. And to this point, he has not even picked up the phone and said, I'm sorry, I wasn't available to address you, Mrs. Williams, Jeanette, or whatever. Never came out of that room. So let's, if we're gonna be fair, listen to everyone's opinion, not just voice your opinion and walk out the room when everyone else has something to say. This is a, this is a community that stands to, need to move forward and until we get on one accord, it won't move forward. I don't care if it's, as you say, the mayor and his clue, or his cronies, or if it's Doug Solomon and his cronies, or whoever it is. We need to come together for the sake of our upcoming generation, which is the youth. And if we can't do it in this one room, it won't ever get done.
Let me answer her, please. First of all-
It's not a going back, it's not a going back.
I didn't do the book, somebody else do the book and so I don't come out.
It's not a going back, you had your chance.
Okay, sure, so that's nonsense.
My name is Beck, we have like thirteen houses in Monticello Village. I'm really so happy with, what is it, Spector? Before we have Inspector, but never have any paperwork, nothing done, like, I don't know what is the name, the Spector, the girls, the lady? So, yeah. I never have any CEO for all the house what I have, like five house, never have CEO, never have nothing with this guy. With this guy, I have everything. All the time he come in my house, Inspector, everything is done, everything is nice. Whatever he need, I finish my, in the house and we not have problem. Couple of time I come in this small office here, cannot find my paper from all the houses, you know what I have, because it's so small. A lot of papers is, you know, and there, if I come now, like two, three months, you there? I don't know how many months, two, three months, really, for, if I come for two, three minutes, five minutes, everything is done. This is the job, this is what we need to do in this village. Everything fast, not if I come to him today in a small place and he tell me come tomorrow, come after tomorrow because I'm so busy or I cannot find now. This is not good, because everybody lose time, me, him, everybody. Now, really, I'm so happy because we have big office there, he doing really good job for everybody. And you see, everybody see now, how the village is changing, how the houses is, you see, from all the houses here, starting with all the new houses, renovation, we spend the money, we need it, this village is good. Not like before, to leave the bump in the houses. I have couple houses in the Springs too, three houses, I have in Springs too. All the houses is by couple people, bump people live in the house, people who not have houses, not, now, you give me permit, village give permit, we've been on zoning board, planning board, we have everything done. All the houses is now brand new, I spent like hundreds thousand in the houses and everything is nice. Thanks to village, thanks to planning board, zoning board and to the mayor and the inspector.
Thank you. Sir, in the back?
I know, I've worked with all the building inspectors in this county, all over, and James is the best. Anytime I question, anytime I need help, anytime I need clarification, he's there, he's, has the right information. He gives me what I need to proceed with the job and as far as that office is there, you know, we can go there. We have meetings with developer, engineers, lawyers, planners, and there's room to meet, there's room to get things done. So, I mean, it's a much better atmosphere than it is in this building. As far as, uh, we spoke about the assisted living centers earlier, um, we're not asking for a variance. What we're asking for is to make the law consistent. Before, V one and V two included nursing home, hospital. Now, uh, when you change it, you added assisted living to only one of those zones. What we're asking for is that you add it to both and be consistent in the use on both of those zones being the same. So, you know, it's a, it's just making the law consistent, it's not asking for new law, it's not asking for new zoning. It's just making it consistent, this is a project that's needed here, it's a big project. Mr. Ting is, is poured a lot of money into this village and continues to. And I think it's in, in the interest of the village and in the interest of all the contractors here who employ local people, who put people to work to help him move forward with these projects. There was a public hearing on today for variance to add a sprinkler line at four twenty-six Broadway. A water line from Landfield Avenue going through a piece of village property. Uh, at the last meeting, I submitted a, a plan of, uh, architect, signed off by the village engineer, signed off by the water department, by the building department, by the street department. It was supposed to be on for a public hearing tonight so that we could proceed. We have a job, uh, project here that has already, Mr. Ting's already invested a half million dollars. There's another million dollars or more to be invested there and the project's on hold.
No, 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 not half minute, one minute.
One million, I'm sorry.
Both places.
And there's another million dollars waiting to be spent, the job's been on hold for thirty days because we can't get this easement through an alleyway owned by the village. No impact really to the village at all, it's just a empty piece of property. We need to dig a trench and put in a water line so that we can have the sprinkler in the building and then continue with the rest of the development of four twenty-six. So I know that I submit, we submitted the plans to the village, the village clerk had copies of them and I was bound for a public hearing, which I really don't know why there was a public hearing scheduled. It should have been able to, been approved without it because all the village departments have already signed, the plan's in place, the project is approved, the planning board's aware, the zoning board's aware and we're waiting. We have, I have fifteen people working in that site, now I have no one.
We'll talk, we'll discuss with the man, manager, James and you and then see what happens, we don't wanna lose, I mean. He's the only guy in this village that thinks building anything or doing anything, so.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Go, Shaw.
I just had a comment, I find it ironic that two, two, two Tuesdays ago, or three Tuesdays ago, the board had voted on to remove the debris, uh, was, had, we had got the lowest bid. And then I find it ironic how, um, the next Wednesday, that same, we had to meet in on Tuesday, Wednesday, the attorney, district attorney, um, sends a stop order on, on, and it's a criminal investigation. How can it be a criminal investigation when it, it happened every since October? So all of a sudden, in April, there's a criminal investigation, that just doesn't sound right. And then the, did it all for what Jeffrey said about with, uh, James. When, they were over there, we had so many problems with Greco, and I have no problem saying with Greco, when money missing, people come into our houses and said that they paid for, and then they didn't get their money and so on and so forth. James, you, you can go over there, you could talk to him, he's doing everything correctly, he did the corrective measure as, as the controller asked us to do. So I find it, don't be vindictive, don't, don't use your vindictiveness to get ma, get back at people. So it's, it's not about that, just do what's right. And James is doing a very good job and has always done a very good job. And I don't know if anybody knows, most of that work that was done, he did it out of his own pocket. He paid people, local people, so that didn't have jobs to come in there and pay, he paid those people. He also was planning on to do the floor, strip down the floor and to do certain things on his own time, his own money. So he put a lot of work into that building and he deserves to stay there. Thank you.
My name's Jesse York and I was up here before to, to talk with the board, but Doug and Jill wasn't here. Very important, I, I talked to, uh, the village manager already about this. So we have to get this done today, very important that I get that work, the equipment, the gym equipment from Waverly or Turk's building, cause he's tearing everything down, cause he's moving. And has to get out, now he gave me till today, but he gave me an extra day, I talked to the manager over there. And we're trying to get it out that we can move that equipment downstairs. Uh, even James said that he could be a good idea and he would help me and everything. And, um, we need it down there. What would do, get it wasted, I mean, it's gonna get destroyed. Why should we get it destroyed, we need it here in the village. Village don't have nothing for anyone to go and use.
It's all weight equipment and all that equipment.
It's new equipment, that's it, that, that same equipment.
Yeah.
We got the old equipment downstairs now, what he wanna do is replace the old equipment with his.
Well, you wanna donate it to the village?
Oh, hey, you go again. He want me to donate it.
Cause you might say-
Well, well, you know.
Cause we might get a new board in and if, and you might say you want the equipment back and they go, what are you talking about? That's village property, so you have to donate it, right?
So let's work that out later.
Okay.
We can work that out later, what we need to do, we wanna pass it so we can get that equipment in it tomorrow.
If you could talk to Ray about it.
Ray, I, Ray, we have not spoken with it. No, you gotta get the three votes.
It's up to them. It's up to the three votes.
You know, when he used to probably before that-
But I, I gave the letter.
Or you wanna discuss it, you wanna discuss it?
You may not need three votes for this, it may be in my ballpark, uh, what I'm asking the board is, can you give me commission if it's logical to store those, uh, equipment wherever we can store it?
Yes.
Nobody used it.
It was okay the last time, sure.
Cause he's got that empty downstairs, he could probably put that empty thing all the way.
I'd like to find the place and let him move it.
All right. Whatever Ray, work with Ray.
Work with Ray with the Iban the last time.
Yeah, that's the next thing, Iban, I told Ray, we gonna talk about that later. We gotta get that up though.
We have to resolve, we have to stop it tomorrow.
All right, ma'am.
I'll see you in the morning.
Okay, we, okay, ma'am, you wanna say something? We gotta finish this meeting up, it's getting a little long here.
I'm Diana, I only got three things to say.
Okay.
That her keeper job, please, let his man have his car to take home, please. And let this man have his office, please. Is that much to ask for? Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great idea to have a youth center, we desperately need it. Several months ago, at the board meeting, when Jesse was here, there was a question that I asked. Is there anywhere we could house Iban? It was gonna be looked into, that was prior to the holidays, that had to be around November. Is it, the question again, is there anywhere where you could house Iban? It's the only positive thing that's going on right now, that I could see for the youth of this village. That's it. Back to square one again.
Why don't you rally about, why don't you rally to the public about building a youth center here? We have crime, we have all kinds of things and no one wants to touch it, why?
My only mistake was I-
That would stop everything in the village.
But in the meantime, until it's built, right, until it's built, now.
We'll discuss, Charlie, what, what's the board is being flowing around, Charlie?
The board discussing, there's some ideas being flowing around and, yeah, the board to talk about it.
You said it may not be for several months or a year from now.
Now, we're, we're-
This is something that we discussed.
We're talking about some things already, so we'll say, all right.
Okay, great, that's all.
Uh, Hildy?
Thank you, James.
Oh, all right. Okay, Hildy?
I just wanna say, I'm happy to be back on the planning board, that's the first thing that I wanted to say, thank you to Ray. And the second thing is that I think this village board should try to keep this man as the manager for as long as they possibly can wrangle him in to stay because he's done so much for this village, he's a positive, uh, representative of this village, he gets a lot of things done, he gets a lot of money for us and I think, you know, you should keep him hostage for as long as you can, thank you. he gets a lot of money for us, and I think, you know, you should keep him hostage for as long as you can, thank you.
Anyone else to the council?
Uh, sir?
Yes, um, my cousin explained before, the vehicle, my, my cousin explained before, Becco Klenrick, he has twelve houses in Monticello, and me and my brother, we started, we have like five houses here in Monticello, and, uh, we've been working with Becco a couple times, we helped him this. And, uh, with Becco, we got to know James. As far as we know James for these past couple years, he's been great for us, and, uh, as far as us, anytime we had to ask him for anything, he's been more than fair, and like, uh, ne- never showed any kind of interest to, you know, like, to explain to us, I need something for interest, you know, but he always tried to help us. So, as far as this, we would like to keep him here as a, as our inspector, you know, because we, we would like to further, you know, have him as a inspector.
All right, thank you.
This is good squad.
Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion, do we have to go to executive session? All right, can I have a motion?
No, no, wait, I wanna, Ray, I wanna, I have a question. Uh, when you say you have, you appoint Glenn Smith and, uh, John Fuller as a, when Glenn Smith has a conflict or something, they have to notify you, you know, who you're gonna send it, when you know that one, they, one Glenn Smith gonna come. They have to come back to you.
Glenn will work that out with, uh, Fuller, in other words, Glenn is our key engineer. If for some reason he can't make a meeting, or can't do something because of a conflict, he will call Fuller, they will let me know first.
Okay, that's what I want to.
If we talk about none of it, we, we could just discuss it all, because it's a part of the agenda.
We finished, motion to adjourn?